We will call the meeting, tonight's meeting, to order. Please rise if you're available and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing body rules and procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I did have a sign-up sheet, and I have one individual here, Mr. Billy Crone. If you'd like to come forward this evening to speak. You're the only one I have on my list so far.
Those are our agenda items, so I can speak now if you'd like, or later.
Hmm. Okay, I'll have to check and see if that is an agenda item, but, okay, all right. Just raise your hand when we get to those items. Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, it doesn't preclude anyone else this evening from coming forward and speaking about any items that are on the agenda. Does anyone else want to come forward at this time? Okay, I see no one else rushing to the podium, so I will go ahead and close out the public, public item session. Next item up is consent agenda. Item, all items listed under this heading are considered to be routine, but the city council may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We do have two items this evening. Does anyone on the council wish to have either of those items removed from the consent? Okay, I seen if I want anything removed, I would entertain a motion for that. Go, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agenda items one and two.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, the second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up this evening is mayor's report. I have two proclamations this evening, and I always like to read those, and I think somebody's going to come forward a little bit later on one of these. Okay, whereas on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Robert E. Lee at the Opelamontex Courthouse on April ninth, eighteen sixty-five. And whereas, the news reached Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Gavelston Bay with Union troops. It was on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, when he told the people of Texas that all slaves were free. And whereas, the celebration of the end of slavery became known as Juneteenth, and is the oldest-known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and successes gained through education, and celebrates the promise of equality and opportunity. And whereas, we honor the generation of activists who helped advance the need to recognize Juneteenth as a way to reconcile our past as we build a new American future together. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam-Kansas, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as a day to commemorate Juneteenth with this year's theme of Milestones of Freedom, celebrating one hundred and sixty years of progress. And I urge all citizens to join in the celebration by attending appropriate programs and events across Johnson County and the Kansas City metro region. Reclaimed on this ninth day of June, twenty twenty-five, Bob Pape, Mayor. Okay, and I think...
Bob, real quick, as part of our new flag ordinance, we're flying the Juneteenth flag for the week, surrounding Juneteenth out here on the plaza.
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that, and bringing that to the attention of the public. Okay, the next proclamation is, whereas, we can commemorate... Sorry, stirred up. Had a little frog in my throat, sorry about that. Whereas, we commemorate the Stonewall Rebellion that occurred in June nineteen sixty-nine in New York City that gave birth to the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender civil rights movement. And whereas, LGBTQ plus pride is defined as the positive stance against discrimination and violence toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and others to promote their self-affirmation and dignity, equality rights, increase their visibility as a social group, build community, and celebrate sexual diversity and gender variance. And whereas, members of the city of Merriam-LGBTQ+ community contribute greatly to neighborhood revitalization, economic vitality, arts and culture, and the social fabric of our city, county, state, and country. And whereas, the city of Merriam prides itself on its inclusiveness and protects its residents from discrimination and harassment based on race, color, sex, religion, disability, age, marital status, place of birth, families with children, sexual orientation, or national origin. And whereas, we are committed to continued social progress and the cause of human rights, celebrating the great diversity of our community. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam-Kansas, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-five as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Merriam, and urge all citizens to join in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist. Respect the rights of all people, celebrate the diversity and richness of our city and county, and attend appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Reclaimed on this ninth day of June, twenty twenty-five, Bob Pape, Mayor. And I understand that we have the advocacy and awareness group of Johnson County out there this evening? Do we have representatives in the back? Okay, thank you. And I would call you forward to the podium, either one or all of you are welcome to come forward. At the end, I will present this to you, but I understand you want to say a few words. We've got Haley Sims, President, or Hilei Sims, excuse me, President, Claudia Dawson, Vice President, and M. Pelosi Moore is a board member. Okay, and your names?
I'm Hilei, yes.
You're Hilei, okay. And, yeah, please give your address and your name for the record.
All right, thank you. My name is Hilei Sims. I live at thirty-five twenty West Forty-Eighth Street in Roland Park. I'd like to, on behalf, I am president of the Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, and on behalf of the AAGJC, I'd like to thank Mayor Pape, city council, and staff, and the residents of Merriam for the Juneteenth proclamation. One of the, and I'd like to invite the citizens of Merriam to our Juneteenth celebration. Our event takes place in downtown Overland Park this Saturday. We start at ten AM at Overland Park City Hall with a commemorative peace march from City Hall to downtown Overland Park, it's approximately mile. And then we have our event, our rally, starts at eleven in Thompson Park in downtown Overland Park. We'd love for everyone to come out. We have, we've got speakers. Our theme this year is Freedom is Good for Your Health, so we've got speakers, we've got singers, we've got performers, we've got a poet. One of the great things about Juneteenth is that, at the very beginning, so people who were just one year out of slavery chose to mark the event by having a celebration, a picnic, they gathered to celebrate it. It wasn't a somber occasion, it was a celebration. And so our event continues in that mode. We are going to celebrate Juneteenth on Saturday, and we would love the people of Merriam to come join us. It's going to be a fun time, so thank you.
Please stay there, and if the rest of you would like to come to the podium, I'm going to bring this proclamation down and present it to you guys. Okay, everyone want to do this? We wish to hold this. There you go. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was the only two proclamations this evening, but I do also have some additional mayor's report things to add. I always like to say a little bit about what I and the council have been up to in the last... This time, it's been several weeks, not just two weeks, so it is a little bit longer report, please bear with me. Okay, I attended the Johnson County, Wyandotte County Mayor's meeting. It was hosted by DeSoto Mayor Walker. Panasonic battery facility will be open this summer, for those of you that might be wondering about that. I attended a Flags for Freedom meeting. Things are progressing nicely, I and a council member did. We can look forward to a great event this year. Flags grow up on June twenty-eighth, come down on July fifth. Volunteers are needed for both days. Please go to the Flags for Freedom webpage to sign up. There would be a concert on July fourth at one PM. I met with Mr. Engel, Kentucky's Annual Review. I met with Johnson County mayors at the KC Country Club, and we shared what each city's currently doing. I and numerous council members, staff, and volunteers attended and assisted in the Turkey Creek Craft Festival. It was another great event. Kudos to our park and rec department and all of their staff for the outstanding efforts to provide another great event for our community, one in which we can all be proud of. I and several council members attended the Ada Weiss Black, Black Party. They celebrated, was their fiftieth anniversary? That's correct, yeah. And they had many artifacts depicting their history over the years, which was pretty cool. I and several council members, I attended the Johnson County Community College GED graduation ceremony. It was an amazing event in which a guest speaker who obtained her GED and then went on to obtain her bachelor's and master's degree afterwards. She got the opportunity to speak at the White House. It was awesome to see all the graduates, and they had a student graduate there that was a GED graduate. It was, it was great to see those individuals overcoming some obstacles and continuing in their education. I and several council members attended the city luncheon hosted by our Merriam PD. We got to recognize employees that received recognition from their fellow employees for their outstanding work. I and the northeast, I attended the Northeast Chamber of Commerce After Hours event, which was hosted by Indigo Rose Salon at ninety-one twenty-four Johnson Drive. If you haven't been there, check out their business, it's very impressive. I attended the OPFD retirement monthly breakfast meeting. Parted everyone up to speed on the great things happening in Merriam. They're always excited to hear about us. I attended the Johnson County Quanis Meeting, did the same thing there. Attended the Johnson County Criminal Advisory Council Meeting, who had a great presentation on what agencies are doing to address criminal activity throughout Johnson County. I attended the Alatha Mayor Bacon's thirtieth year of service celebration. Now, to throw a library down there, congrats to him for his, you know, many years of dedicated service. I and a council member met with Mr. Engel to prepare tonight's agenda. I and a council member attended the Tim Murphy Art Show Exhibit. If you have not seen that yet, you can still swing by there and see it for a few more weeks. I and a council member attended the National Donut Day Event at Krispy Kreme with our very own Merriam PD. And who were guests, they were there with donuts. But nothing better than a hot donut right off the assembly line, that was, that was great. And I'm surprised that I didn't have a proclamation, because that's a national day evidently, and we might want to consider that next year. Mr. Engel, make a note, okay. A council member was able to carry the Special Olympics torch during the run through Merriam Police, or through the, through the run through Merriam by our PD. And our police department's been advocates for Special Olympics for a number of years. Please thank our officers for their supporting that worthy cause. I met with reporters at KC TV Five, gave us some background information on why the old Antioch Library building was torn down, and what the proposed plans are for that location. I invited them to attend our special council meeting on June sixteenth for more information. I attended a block party on Cary Lane, Ward Three, spoke to all the residents about the things that are currently happening in Merriam, invited them to attend our council meeting as well. I was interested, or I'd like to share, I guess, at least, that several talked to me about the single holler, and they were, they actually appreciated the fact that the council had done that, so. There's an annual garden club of Shani will be conducting their annual special gardens on June fourteenth from nine AM to five PM. We'll have to report that there's two gardens in Merriam that's going to be on that tour. Please check out their website page to get tickets for the event. So I'm not going to give you their addresses, but, because it is a fundraiser for them. But they, the funds that are raised go for a variety of good, good causes, so, you know, hopefully you'll be able to see that, and see the ones in Merriam. We're excited to have WDAF, this is upcoming, Channel Four Zip Trip Cruise coming to Merriam on July thirteenth. They'll be traveling throughout Merriam showcasing our great city throughout the morning, and the whole metro area will soon get a chance to see all that Merriam has to offer. Live broadcasts will take place down at our community center, I understand, so that's pretty much all I have. So did I miss anything else from the council that...
Party in the Park is Friday.
Oh, Party in the Park is coming, and that's at Brown Park, isn't it? Yes, please, please come to the Party in the Park on Friday as well. Lots of stuff happening on Friday, yeah. All right, thank you. Okay, council items, looks like first item up this evening for council items is Consider Approval of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds. I've got Mr. Engel coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Next item on your agenda is Consider Approval of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds for economic development purposes, as well as a recommendation to waive the first reading. Want to point out that we have our bond counsel, Jacob Lowry, with Kutech Rock in the crowd to backstop any difficult questions that you may have that I can't answer. This item is an ordinance that is connected to our Merriam Grand Marketplace project that'll be before council next Monday at our special meeting on June sixteenth at seven PM to consider the project as a whole. There will be a variety of votes that the council will consider. A little bit reminder to that project, that the project is at the northwest corner of Antioch and Shawnee Mission Parkway. Includes a twelve thousand five hundred square foot grocery, four thousand square foot retail restaurant, as well as approximately two hundred and fifteen Class A apartments on the west block. The apartment's to be owned by Drake, the grocery restaurant retail to be owned by the city. The ordinance that you're considering tonight is to approve, to approve the ordinance to authorize the use of Home Rule Authority to permit the city to take certain actions it deems are in its best interest to the city, but which are not specifically spelled out in state statute, which includes economic development purposes. All of that relative to Article Twelve, Section Five of the Kansas Constitution. Again, this is to authorize the issuance of bonds, this is not issuing bonds. As a reminder of why we're issuing bonds, should the city next Monday determine that they want to proceed with the proposal and the project with Drake Development, we would be funding our portion of the project with general obligation bonds. Those general obligation bonds would be repaid with the proceeds from the existing I thirty-five redevelopment district, a proposed one percent community improvement district, as well as proceeds from the grocery and restaurant retail rents that the city would receive as the owners of those properties. I think it's important to point out that no general fund dollars are projected to go towards repaying the bonded debt for this project. All of those funds will come from statutorily authorized economic development funding sources, as just named. So therefore, the bonds will have minimal impact on service levels for our residents, which I think is exciting. The ordinance has a projected not-to-exceed amount of forty million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That is for two series of bonds, the Series Twenty Twenty-five A bonds, which are tax-exempt, is, will be a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five point one million dollars. And the Twenty Twenty-five B series of bonds, which will be taxable, have a not-exceed amount of fifteen million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. These are not-to-exceed amounts, we statutorily have to set a maximum amount that, that all of the possible variations of the bond issuance could come up to. We actually anticipate it'll be considerably less than this, but this is a not-to-exceed amount. So that, it's those two, two numbers that are combined together. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read my own writing here. As an aside, last week, members from, staff members, as well as our financial advisors from Columbia Capital, sat for a ratings call with Standard and Poor. As those of you may recall, that we are in rarefied air. We are one of the few units of local government in the country that actually have the triple-A bond rating. We have had the triple-A bond rating from S and P since the last issuance of debt, which was for the community center. That debt will expire in twenty twenty-seven, so we have to interview with them, and then they will go to committee, and then they will determine if we will maintain our triple-A rating. All indications are we will, which ultimately saves our residents and businesses tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. It's kind of like having a great, it's having a perfect credit score. And so we're pretty excited about that. I think that's something we should toot our horns more about, and when those ratings do come out, we will toot our horns about that, because that is something that is, puts us in rarefied air. But I digress. The, it's important to point out that this ordinance does, simply authorizes the issuance of debt. We will come back to this on Monday and determine if that's the route that the council would like to take by accepting the project as a whole. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this particular ordinance, or I have Jacob to help me. Yes, sir?
Yeah, thanks. So then we would be voting on, if, if we approve the idea of potentially issuing bonds, we'd be voting on issuing the bonds next week?
That is correct.
And then we would also know at that point how much the bonds are being issued for?
We will likely not know that until we actually have the bids back for the cost of the project, and then when we issue the bonds, because it, there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, depending on how they size and issue the bonds, there could be different type of coupon rates on those, or redemption rates. And so this is actually the maximum amount that it could be in the worst version of the multiverse.
Yeah.
Close?
Yeah, definitely close. Counsel, hello. The number you see next week may be a little bit smaller as we're kind of fine-tuning things. We just want to make sure the number that goes in tonight doesn't trip us up down the road, and then all of a sudden we've got project costs that aren't included, and, and we're over, and we've got to come back and approve a different number. So to put a finer point on what Chris said, and he's a semi-bond lawyer now, it's great. So what we're approving tonight is the authority by which we'll issue the bonds. So it's important that we approve this Home Rule Authority, because the project that's being entered into here isn't specifically authorized by state statutes. So Kansas is unusual compared to a lot of states where they have this Home Rule Amendment, which authorizes cities to adopt Home Rule Authority, which gives them the ability to kind of manage what they think is best for their cities, as long as it's not, you know, contradictory to state statutes. You know, there's, there are statutes that authorize certain things, or statutes that say you can't do certain things. As long as you're not opposed to those, you can, you can take on this Home Rule Authority that gives you extra power to manage your city the way you think is the best. So that's, that's what we're doing tonight, is, it's a pretty, it's kind of an unusual process, I get that, but it's a pretty simple ordinance. So procedurally, what we're doing is adopting this Home Rule Authority so we can get this ordinance published prior to next week's meeting, so then we have the authority to go ahead and approve the bonds next week, if that's what you guys choose to do. So there'll be, there'll be additional ordinances next week that actually approve the specific bonds, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and so waiving the first reading today means that we would be able to vote on actually issuing the bonds next week. Right. Okay.
Ms. Hans?
Yes, I have a question, and I don't know how to ask the specifics, but I read headlines, and I've read that there's some concern about the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds going away as, because Congress has looked at it, and I know, I read headlines. And then the second part of my question is, just with the volatility of bond markets in general, of all the markets in general, are we increasing our risk in any way, I mean, more than we should?
Yeah, so I'll do my best to answer the first part. Obviously, none of us know what's going to happen from day to day.
Right.
Early indications, and, and I can say, you know, in the big beautiful bill, there was not a repeal of tax-exempt bonds, so that was a positive for all of us who work in this industry, as well as municipalities who issue tax-exempt debt. So that's a plus. Now, we don't know where it's going to go from here, we just don't know. So, you know, the best we can do is to continue operating as if it's not going to go away, and, and hope that that's the case. Now, market-wise, Jeff, I don't know if you want to chime in on market, but I think the bond market has mostly recovered back to a stable place. You know, I think there was some volatility for a couple of months based on tariffs.
The reading I did today said it sort of calmed down a little bit.
It has. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management. Last week, the municipal market saw twenty billion dollars of issuance, which was, I think, the largest amount of volume in a single week in a decade, or something like that. We had a pretty terrible three-week period in the weeks, starting with the announcement of the tariffs, where there were two or three days where no transactions were effectively getting done, at least not at any sort of affordable levels. And it took a few weeks to sort of clear the backlog. But even with the sort of chaotic way that tariffs are coming on and coming off, and inflation is maybe going up, or maybe it's not, or the Fed might be moving, or it might not be moving, our market continues to transact efficiently. And we, the best protection we have against that volatility is the fact that we're triple-A. The lower credit rating that you have, the more suspect you are to those day-to-day movements and rates, and sort of investors being interested or not being interested. The other sort of nuance-y thing that's happened that benefits us is, as taxable rates have risen, and municipal rates have risen at the same time, union rates have actually risen sort of in that three-week period disproportionately compared to taxable rates going up. What that means is that our market today produces a, a better outcome for tax-exempt investors relative to taxable investors than at any point that we've seen over the last couple of years. So even as absolute rates are changing, the relative value of the tax exemption has increased, which has caused investors to come back into the market that had sort of left. So it's, it's an interesting dynamic, but fingers crossed, at least last week and, and going into this week, we've seen stable markets even in the face of very significant supply, so again, fingers crossed.
So we are going to be affected by timing, it sounds like, when we offer the bonds?
Yeah, we always, we always are. And, you know, our perspective as a firm, and we advise not just Merriam, but all of our clients is, you, you bring the bonds when they're ready, meaning you have a need for the borrowing, and we've done all our homework. We've gotten the statutory or Home Rule Authority in place to get that done, and we take the bonds to the market. We avoid days like Fed meeting days, which tend to be days where we see some volatility. We can work around those, but other than that, you know, we're going to go into the market at our timing, and not really the market's timing. Every once in a while, weird things happen. We had a client that had bonds in the market the day that Superstorm Sandy hit New York City. And you might recall, there was tons of flooding in Manhattan. A lot of these investment bank pricing desks, the folks that are buying these bonds, they, their trading desks are in New York City. We were able to transact that day because, you know, there are contingency plans, and all these banks have, by regulation, backups, and, you know, folks didn't come to the office, or they traded off their Charlotte desk rather than their New York desk. So the market is pretty robust, and it's gotten pretty good at sort of dealing with the weirdness that we've seen over the last couple of years in the economy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. White? Let's see, no other questions at this point, okay. Mr. Eng, or, excuse me, Mr. Crone, I think wants to come up and say something to this. Is this one of them? Oh, sure, oh, we had a question.
I have one quick question for Chris. Can you give us just like the thirty-thousand-foot view of why we have a special council meeting next, next Monday?
We have the, there's several reasons. One, we felt like it made most sense to have all of those things be all on one night, and have them isolated in and of themselves. The second reason is that from a statutory standpoint of when things go through planning, and when they have to be published, and when you have so many days for the planning items to go through. And then the third reason was that because Matt Pennington with Drake Development is out of town tonight.
No, that's fine.
But in order of importance is what I gave them to.
Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Engel?
Answer your question.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Crone, please come forward.
Good evening, council. Billy Crone, that's CRO.
Billy Crone, that's C R O A N, as in November 4th. I live at 6633 Wed Street. So I read the legal record when it comes out and I was shocked to see $40 million of, of general obligation bonds, says payable from unlimited ad valorem taxes. That's what was published in the legal record. And that's kind of concerning to read that. It's a lot of money. We, we issued bonds before, as you recall, Engel just mentioned, for the community center. There was a public vote back then, but there won't be one here. We issued a sales tax back then, we're doing one here, we're just calling it CID. So I oppose $40 million of new debt upon the shoulders of this city without a vote of the public. I took a couple of notes while he was speaking. And I think I covered it. Thank you.
Mr. Crone? Okay, well, at this point, I would call for a motion for waiving of the first reading if that's what the council still wishes to do. Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, now I've got a frog in my throat. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, of bonds of the city of Mariam in an amount not to exceed 40,800, that, there's a, it's missing.
Forty million.
Yeah, I was going to say, $4,855,000.
Forty.
Forty million, 855,000 dollars. It looks like on the sheet, we're only spending 40 grand, so.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second for that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Hands, okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cosmier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, that was for the waiving. I would entertain a motion for the acceptance. Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the purchase of license, hm, wrong. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Mariam in an amount not to exceed $40,855,000 for economic development purposes, all pursuant to Article 12, Section 5 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
That was 4,885, right?
40,085 cents.
Forty million.
Million, 850.
Thank you, okay. I have a motion, I have a second?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye. Aye, I'm on it, aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmier?
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item up is consider the purchase of license plate readers at one of our intersections. We've got the chief coming forward. Please enlighten us, sir.
Evening, mayor, city council. What you have before you tonight is the approval to purchase license plate reader cameras in intersection monitoring cameras at Antioch and Shawnee Mission Parkway. We currently have several LPR intersection cameras in the city. They are generally based at our busiest intersections and in our commercial areas where we have our highest crime areas. We use the license plate reader cameras to assist us in monitoring for stolen autos, people who have active warrants there in the database, and then criminal investigations for crimes that do happen in the area. We're able to go back and look, see what vehicles were in the area at the time the crime occurred. Intersection cameras were used to monitor traffic conditions, to help us in accident investigations. You know, everybody says the light was green, although four people went through the intersection in different directions at the same time. So we're able to use those cameras to help us with that, also to help other agencies like our own Public Works when they have traffic county needs and/or Operation Greenlight. So this is not a new request, other than the location it's at. Given the commercial buildup that we're having currently in Shawnee Mission Parkway and Antioch, it is one of our busiest, if not the busiest, intersection in our city. We would like to go ahead and install four-way LPR and four-way intersection cameras there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief McGlaughlin? Go ahead, Ms. Cosmier.
Yeah, so that's a pretty busy intersection. Are there already any license plate readers at that intersection?
We do not have any license plate readers at that intersection. We do have some intersection cameras, but they do not cover all four directions. It's actually just one camera that's a pan tilt zoom. It's old and is due to be replaced anyway, so this gives us the ability to add all four directions and update that equipment, but currently we don't have any LPRs at that intersection.
Okay, do, are there any, any of the adjacent intersections?
We currently have an LPR system at Shawnee Mission Parkway in Eby. Basically, it's Eby and East Frontage Road and then down at Johnson Drive in Antioch there's an LPR system.
Okay. And then how are the license plate reader systems implemented in Mariam? So it sounded like there is a record that you keep or that you pay a company to keep?
We do not pay a company to keep. The data is stored on our servers and is only accessed by us. The data is only shared with other law enforcement agencies upon requests for identified criminal activity that they're investigating. We do not share our data with outside entities. We do not share it with any private entities. The data is stored in our server for 180 days and it has an automatic drop-off time after 180 days unless the data is needed for some investigation and then it's tied to a case and stored for the duration of the evidence needed for that case.
Okay, great. No, that's all good to hear. I was concerned about, you know, access with, you know, third parties or long durations. And so I'm glad that you answered a lot of those questions preemptively. Thanks.
Glad I could do that.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
Do the license plate readers actively scan for license plates or only if a request is made?
If I think I understand your question, I'm going to try to answer it the way I think I heard it. The license plate readers are, hit our database and in our database, we download daily, if not more often during the day, depends when the NCIC Regis computers download license plate information as it relates to stolen vehicles or people associated with vehicles that have warrants for their arrest. So we filter that information because we do not, we try to keep out like Kansas City, Missouri parking violations and things like that because we don't want to have our officers continuously getting their alerts on their computers for things like that. So we tend to only focus on felonies, local Mariam warrants, that type of thing. Did I answer your question?
So do you have to like actively go and search for a license plate or once the database is updated, it will scan through all 180 days to search for that license?
So the only time we're searching for license plates is if we have a reason to do so, meaning someone said, hey, this car came through during the time we had a crime. And then we will scan during that timeframe and see if that type of car is in there. Or we get a license plate number for a suspect and we scan to see if that suspect was in the area of, of the crime. We only get alerts on things that are entered in the computer that, like a stolen car. The officers aren't sitting there running license plates through the LPR system, seeing who's been through, that's not the way it works. So it's back in its investigatory, if we're looking for a particular thing. On the front end for the officers, it's alerts if a stolen car goes through the intersection, that type of thing.
All right. Mr. Silver, go ahead.
I don't have a question as much as a statement. Chief, I think you remember last time this topic came up, I voted no. But since that time, I was on a ride-along and experienced that system being used to locate a stolen vehicle. I believe it may have had a juvenile in it and all the agencies were trying to locate it for the well-being of the juvenile. And so seeing it in action and the need for it kind of changed my opinion on it. I just wanted to let you know that.
Appreciate that.
It's something that on the surface is kind of hard to understand until you.
Yeah, I, I get that. It's, it's one of those things, your knee jerk is, you know, Big Brother's watching, that type of thing. I think I've set up here before when I've asked for these, I don't intend on building a database of LPR records and people's movements. I think 180 days gives us just enough time to go back and do a thorough investigation of things that we were made aware of at a later date, but doesn't allow us to build any kind of database that can track people's movements over the course of time, see where they're going. I'm as reluctant about any of that as anybody else. So it's a tool, like everything else, tools can be abused. We have policies in place and I can assure you, I'm going to make sure, while I'm here, that we don't abuse those tools like any other tools that the citizens of Mariam kind enough to give us, so.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
And I don't, I'm good with the license plate readers. My question is about using the CIP Underground Utilities Project to fund this. Does that fit in with all the rest of that, some of that?
It, it does. We'll be, we're making improvements on both sides of that street. We're running conduit through there on all of the streets, so, and it will benefit the developments on both sides of the street. So it made perfect sense to staff to incorporate into the utility undergrounding. It was either there or from contingency, so we figured it could be, it could be project cost.
Is there going to be enough money in that budget to cover all the utilities and this?
Yeah, I think, great question. If you will recall, the preliminary budget for that project was $4 million, but because we are, well, evergreen is unconstrained by that budget and we don't know exactly what it would cost and they just said we would have to pay all overages. We came back to council and asked for an additional $1 million worth of contingency. There have been a few small modifications on that project in terms of where things are going. We felt like with the $1 million, we could roll this $50,000 into that extra $1 million of contingency as it supports the project and it would make sense. Did that answer your question? Yeah, and it's, it's up to council's discretion. We just felt like it worked because of the location, because of the work that's being done there.
Any other questions for the chief? Go ahead, Mr. Cosmier.
Yeah, so I'm also sort of apprehensive about the idea of license plate readers, the network of them. I like hearing about the deletion policy after 180 days. I like hearing the, the example that Jason just gave us. Are there any like statistics that you have about like how many times these have been used or anything like that?
I don't have any numbers here today.
Yeah.
And trying to gather those numbers would be difficult because they're logged in each individual report, so I'd have to go have my crime house go through every report and pull out, okay. They're used quite regularly. I mean, today they had an LPR hit on a possible stolen car and it turned out that, again, it was a KCK not taken out of the system, so, you know, but it's good to let the people know, hey, you're running around in a car that they forgot to take out and, and things like that. And like Councilman Silver said, you know, missing persons, we get those hits on a regular basis too, so I don't have any.
Okay.
Hard data for you. I just know that they are active.
If, if I could add, I'm sorry, just, I, I think it's important to remember also that by the time generally these things hit, because of the size of our community, because the highways that we have in our community, they're already gone, right? So it, it, it will log presence, but generally unless somebody happens to be right there, it's quite possible if they're evading somebody, they're, they're already gone, right? It's just, again, it's a remnant that this person was here and likely could help another agency figure out where somebody they're looking for went through.
Do you know what happened to that car that had the incorrect hit? Like were they, you know, pulled over later and then?
We pulled him over and, and again, we verify. So how this works is, is say we get a hit on a stolen car. We call dispatch and have them verify that it's stolen because you're dealing with computers.
Right, right.
So we actually have to get a hard contact with that and say, hey, we got a hit on your car, it says it's stolen. They verify if it's stolen or not. They say, well, no, it doesn't show to be stolen anymore. We still pulled the gentleman over and said, hey, KCK hasn't pulled your tags, we're getting it taken care of, just to let you know that, you know. Or sometimes it's an, it's the owner just driving the car and they just forgot to tell KCK or everybody else, hey, my car was recovered, I got it back and W me, I forgot. Well, okay, that's bad because we're going to think it's a stolen car. So those happen a lot more than people realize they happen, so. But then again, sometimes we get actual stolen cars.
Right, right.
You know.
Mr. Mayor?
I too am apprehensive about the idea of a database of license, of recorded license plates. Generally, I think I support it now, but what happens in 12 months, two years, 10 years, if things go the other way and council, the future council wants to rescind license plate readers in Mariam, does the council have that authority? If a future council so chooses?
If, if, if a future city administrator wants to keep their job, absolutely.
Yeah, if it's a little of the council. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like we're winding down on questions. Okay, thank you, sir. Like, Mr., oh, do we have one more? Oh, Mr. Crone, I think wants to come forward and, before we, before we take any motions, please come forward, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Billy Crone, 663 Wed Street. So I've been reviewing council agendas as they come out for like the last 10 years and I was discussing with an agenda this week, or with a neighbor this weekend, an agenda item, this Alper camera. And they wanted to know what the retention policies were for our Alper cameras. I think in the interest of transparency, this ought to be on our website, but I couldn't find it. I'm happy to hear it here today verbally, but I think a written and public policy would be best in the interest of transparency. I have also asked our chief in the past to include a list of cameras that Mariam bought and operates with our tax money in their yearly reports. His department has outright denied me this information before. Sure, Alper makes tracking bad guys easier, but it does so at a cost. I find it troubling that our city is creating and storing specific searchable records about the daily movements of nearly every free, peaceful, innocent person. That's how these work. It goes into a database whether they're guilty or not without even having a warrant. I know that sounds like some far-fetched conspiracy theory, but it isn't. It is literally on your agenda for tonight to approve those. And you may, but I would ask you not to. Technology like Alper and facial recognition erode Kansas' sense of personal agency and privacy more and more every year. Alper has been abused across the nation by government workers in, in a position of power to stalk their acquaintances. Just Google for Alper abuse, there's lots of stories. It happens in Kansas, too. One Kansas lieutenant, Victor Hyer, was arrested in 2022 for stalking his wife using the city's Alper network. Cedric County Police Chief Lee Nygaard admitted to misusing Alper 220 times to stalk his ex-girlfriend and her new fiancee, and that was just in 2022. I haven't even gone looking for new ones since then. I've had these notes for a while. These abuses are very real. I'll cite my sources and I do hope you verify the articles that I've quoted. I put links to them at crone.org/Alper, that's C R O A N as in November, dot org slash A L P R, like Automatic License Plate Reader. There's also a one I didn't think I would mention, but there was a lady in San Francisco who was pulled out of her car at gunpoint because of an Alper error. And we just heard today those Alper, those errors do happen. Thankfully, that, it wasn't a violent encounter here in Mariam, but it could be someday. We won't have the same chief forever, right? These things, as Jacob I think mentioned, you know, they, they will exist for many years and future councils, future chiefs can change stuff. Bob, you, you applauded the city's transparency at the last meeting because there was a reporter in the audience and I am very glad that Ms. Garcia is here, but you all forgot that there was a neighbor present who attends and shares recordings of every other meeting in the city when your staff isn't denying me entry. Even when the city turns its cameras off, when the reporters are gone and you're nowhere to be seen, I am there and bringing beautiful Kansas sunshine to our city's meetings. It is irresponsible to expand the city's Alper network without first being transparent about our retention and usage policies, post them to the website, and how they're monitored to prevent abuse and the locations of these cameras being listed publicly. If you really care about transparency, Bob, this is the time to do more than just talk and clap. I'm asking you to table this and demand transparency before another dollar is spent. Thank you.
Mr. Crone? Okay, well, having heard that, it would be up to the council to make that decision, but I would entertain a motion if we move forward with this.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the purchase of license plate readers and intersection cameras at Antioch and Shawnee Mission Parkway in the amount of $50,574.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmier?
No.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, one.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like our next item up is the 2026 budget revenues presentation. Is that correct?
As the finance director comes up, I just thought I'd give a kickoff. This is our next budget work session. We have several options of how we can roll these out to the council. We felt like during the council meeting made the most sense for our proposed budget revenue preview. We're pretty excited to share with you the outlook that we believe we will see in 2026 from a revenue perspective and, well, you've already read the packet, and some downward mill movement that we haven't generally had year after year in the past. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the finance director to share with you her presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thrilled to be here tonight. So we're going to give just a very high level overview of some of the main revenues that make up our general fund. So this little chart is going to show you our five main revenues that go into the general fund. Obviously, the primary one is sales tax coming in at about 54%. Property tax is next up at 28%. And all of these are going to be your percentages for the proposed 2026 budget, but they're very comparable when you look at the 2025 projected numbers as well and even years prior to that. I always talk about the community center every time I come up here because it blows me away every time, but it is our third highest category for revenues, coming in at 7%. Other, I did include an asterisk. This mostly encompasses different building permits, fees, licenses, all court costs, and then interest is a huge piece of that other category. Interest rates have came in tremendously high, which you'll see when we go into more details in a future presentation. And then we have franchise fees. So those are our primary five categories. I know we're going to talk more about property taxes soon, but we thought it would be good to break out that about 50, a little over 50% is residential with that. A little under 50% is going to be commercial. So this is what makes up your property tax revenue. And then the remaining is vacant or not, not-for-profit. We will go into that more, but if at any point you have questions, feel free to stop me. So percentages are great, but I think numbers are what people typically care more about. So you will see about a million dollar increase in revenue from 2025 projected to 2026 proposed. Primarily, this is due to property tax, which again, we will get into in a little bit and just what we're proposing to council, but you can change that at any point. So this is based on staff's recommendation. We would be looking at about 26 million in revenue just for the general fund, and it is still broken up by those five categories that I mentioned earlier. Any questions on historical? Okay. And I will remind everyone that we had to do the property tax adjustment last year. So that's why you kind of see a jump from 24 to 25. And you'll see a slight one from 25 to 26, but not as much as prior. So this is some terminology that you might hear around property tax. Assessed property value is essentially, you think of your appraised home value, so what you know you could go sell your house for. The assessed property value is what we use to calculate the tax. And so for residential, we take 11.5% of that value that you know, and that gives me your assessed property value, which is what I can tax on. Then, that's a different number for commercial, but we'll get into that later. This is all just residential. So then you would take the mill rate and multiply that and then divide it by 1,000. That's what helps you understand what the mill is. So how much revenue is going to be generated per mill. Then we also have the revenue neutral rate, and that essentially means that we're looking at what the mill levy would have to be for us to generate the same amount of revenue with our new assessed values for this year that we had last year. But we'll talk a little bit more about each of these in depth, so. So talking about historical numbers, this is what your mill levy has looked like for the past, since 20, or sorry, 2009. Staff is aware that council has a goal of lowering the mill levy as much as possible every year. So what we are proposing to you is to go from our current mill levy of 26.665, decreasing it a quarter for 2026. At this time, you know, tonight, we are not asking you to vote on anything. This is purely just an assumption based on what we think we need to continue operating the same service level that we currently have, but it is still your prerogative to say more, less, revenue neutral, whatever you choose. So this is just council's assumption at the moment. So it's great to talk about mill levies and all those types of things, but how does that actually impact our homeowners here in Marion? So in black along the left, you're going to see if we kept the exact same mill rate, didn't change anything, but we used our average value. So I talked a little bit about the calculation that goes into, you know, how do we get to property tax and whatnot. This is the impact that you would see for the average home in Marion, which according to Johnson County is 310,000. It went up about 10,000 from 25 to 26, which is great. So this homeowner would pay about $80 a month. And then on the far right, you'll see in blue, which is what staff is proposing to you. It's about a dollar savings. It would go down just a little bit for them. So that's just to give you a little bit of a gut check on how this would impact taxpayers' pockets between the two.
Good, Mr. Mayor.
That also assumes that their house doesn't become more valuable next year.
Correct. Okay.
Any other question, Ms. Borth, this time? No? Okay, go ahead.
Keep moving. Okay, another great question is how do we compare? All of the numbers for other cities on here are going to be from what their current mill levy is. Some are in their budget process right now, just like us, but no one is as far along as us, really. So these are all what their current are and just how we compare and then where our proposed rate would fit in. So as you can see, we're a little bit above middle of the pack, which I think is great for the amenities that we're able to provide and the environment that you get here in Marion. But questions on that? And we do not have a fire rate, which some do, which obviously set them slightly higher as well. This is going to be organized by the total city rate, not just their mill. Okay. And I know what is a mill? It's a little confusing. It just means per mill. This is what's generated. It's not one person is paying one mill. It's just sort of a term that is used statewide here in Kansas. And then if someone's looking at their property tax bill, they might be curious, okay, only $80 of my bill is going to the city of Marion. Where the heck is the rest of it going? So obviously, a large portion goes to Shawnee Mission Schools. They'd pay almost about double what they would pay to us on any given home to the schools. And then there's the rest of where I guess a dollar would go or where the rest of their property bill would go. It is broken down and then at the bottom, you'll see some, the Marion drainage applies as well. So any questions on that? Okay. And then, like I said, we did have, we saw a little bit of an increase when it came to the average home in Marion, about $10,000 from last year to this year. And so with assessed valuation, we are about a year behind. We, the mill, the property tax in Ad Valorem is based on the year before's valuation. So we are currently working with 2025 valuations. So you can see that across the board, the different properties in Marion actually increased in value. There were some slight changes and most of that is due, which I have actual numbers of the, the number of each of these and kind of how that shifted, but we saw a lot of changes in the number of commercial vacant and not-for-profit. And then we also believe that a decent portion of the apartment complexes is going to be included in these numbers as well because some would have opened up across the way with the new development when they were doing these assessments. Not all of them will be included, but some. So it's sort of the reason for some of the increase. Yes, sir.
So, okay, so that explains the, the large difference in vacant property values?
Yes, sir.
Because that definitely stuck out to me, stuck out to me while I was looking at.
Yes, that number, the number of vacant properties went down, not tremendously, but I think it was because of the parcel number, if that makes sense. But yes, sir, I believe your assumption is correct.
Okay.
So now, I know a lot of people are probably questioning revenue neutral rate. This is set by the state of Kansas. There is a process, which we'll talk about next, if we want to exceed the revenue neutral rate, which I believe everyone's familiar with. But I thought it might be nice to show you the difference between the mill rate that staff is sort of bringing to you right now for you to consider and then what the revenue neutral rate we believe is going to be. We're not going to get back the actual revenue neutral rate from the county for about a week, but this is my best guess, doing some girl math. So I believe that our revenue neutral rate is going to come in around 24 mills from the county, and that is just our estimate based on how much property tax revenue we think is going to come in for the year we're currently in. So they wait a little bit longer than we get to for this presentation, but. And then I have a comparison for the amount that we project that we will bring in. That $7.6 million, there's a little bit of a caveat to that because that is the straight number. It does not include any delinquencies, which we do have a decent percentage of that every year. People just simply don't pay, whether that's residential, commercial, vacant. And then we also have a decent amount of protests that happen. So that does not include anything. That would just be the most that we would ever see come in. So when we talk the budget later, that number will change. We're going to see us budget much more conservatively than what the calculations may show, just because there's a lot of variables with how much we might actually bring in. Any questions on those two? Okay. So my final slide is what happens next. So like I said, theoretically, on June 13th, we're going to receive the revenue neutral rate information from the county. And then at that point, after that, we'll do a little bit more calculations and then bring a much more comprehensive and detailed budget to you. We'll feel a little bit better about property tax revenue and what that number's going to be. I'll also have another week or two to check on sales tax. And then we will also talk with you about expenditures and try and fit those within revenues and just see how the big picture is going to look. We'll bring that to you. And then at that point, we will also need you to kind of talk about what you want to do with the mill levy. If we want to stick with the revenue neutral rate, which simplifies things a little bit, you'll see that further down the list in bold. Or if you want to exceed it, which the amount, the mill levy that we have proposed is exceeding it, so we would move to that one if you felt comfortable with what staff is recommending. But obviously, that is your purview. We just wanted you to kind of understand what the process would look like either way that you went to match what the state requirements are. And that is all I have for you now, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this was a brief overview, but just so you have time to digest some of our large revenues that happen in the general fund before we throw all the detailed information at you, I know, a week or two.
Any questions for finance director Borth?
Yeah, I have a question and it probably doesn't impact the budget. Does anybody have any idea why commercial assessed value is going down for next year?
So we looked at it. We had a huge amount of new construction gain, and I actually have a call into the appraiser to try and understand that a little bit more. We had almost $6 million in increased assessed value between apartments and commercial. Not entirely sure, but it seems because we had 25% increase for car dealerships with their valuations and a million for IKEA, but those are all in the TIF district. So unless other commercial entities are going down and they're not following the trend, but I do have a request in for that information because that's a huge percentage. So the number did go down for some reason and the amount of commercial properties that were assessed. So either those switched to residential or vacant or some sort of a shift happened there because the number did go up for residential, but.
That does include the TIF districts, right?
No, it does not, sir.
Does not include?
It does not, no.
Okay. Well, that's where our growth is. Okay.
Yes, yeah, and we did see tremendous growth in the TIF, which we'll talk about the next, the detailed sort of breakdowns, but nothing on this side, so.
Go ahead, Shana.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the commercial property value went down because we've demolished some of the commercial properties?
There's a good chance. And like I said, that number, it did go down. So I wasn't here for all of that year, but that would be my assumption. But I do have a request in because they don't give us specific property. They just give us overall numbers. So when I get that, I think they're a little busy over there right now in Johnson County, but as soon as I get it, I will pass it along.
I mean, we, we, we've debated that. We've tried to figure, you know, you had commercial property, which was Kmart. Kmart is not in the TIF. You remember it's carved around that. Kmart was commercial, now it's residential. Does, is that part of the increase in the residential? Yeah, we're.
Soon as we know, we will tell you because we question that too.
These are, these are good numbers. We just don't know where they came from.
Yes.
Ms. Cozmeier.
Okay, so those aggregated numbers are just totals that the Johnson County assessor gives us. It's not like you and/or your staff going through ARC GIS or whatever.
No, sir. We don't have all that. They actually give us, which we met, Mayor Administrator Ingle and I, we all met with the appraisers and they give you a nice book and all of the, the fun information that they assume, and then obviously it changes. They'll do a reassessment soon. But yes, that's, we're working with the latest and greatest from Johnson County.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
This might seem like an obvious answer, but what exactly defines a vacant property? And my question is more about like if utilities are still, unlike the church that the city now owns on Marion Drive, is that considered vacant? Because we do heat and cool it and I think we have other utilities going to it. Is that considered vacant?
It is. So they, from what I can tell, is it's anything that does not have more value on it than just the land. So anything that is underground would still be considered land. Anything above ground would be, I guess, assessed at some sort of a rate more than just land. So then it would transition from vacant.
So it's not necessarily like I would think if an abandoned house or whatever that, or a house that is in good condition that no one's living in, I would call it a vacant house, but for the purposes of this, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If I can just give an example of that, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. The St. Joseph's plot, which has six lots now on it, those are vacant, correct? Because there's no home on them. If they had a old dilapidated house, they would not be vacant. So there are lots that we have in the community that just don't have improvements, which are things that are sitting on the dirt.
And so actually, for that same example, when that landowner took that existing plot that had a house on it and then chopped it into six lots and now five of them don't have a house, now we've added vacant land?
I would believe so until they build on it.
Okay.
I just have to correct that because there was not a house on that property.
Gotcha, thanks.
There's a house behind it.
Okay.
And it's too late. We just did it tonight, so.
Any other questions on that?
Well, thank you. And we will be back with more detail.
All right. Mr. Cronin, I'd like to come forward, come forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Billy Cronin, 6633 Wed Street. And thank you, Jacob, for pointing out the hoops that staff are jumping through to tell us that residents would pay less, assuming that property values don't go up in 2026. I'm glad staff mentioned that we still have the option to reduce it. That's great. I looked at the graph. This is from the same packet, and it looks like right now it's definitely projected to go up by about a million dollars and most of that's coming from increased property taxes. I don't like that. Let's see. Please don't fall for the mill rate myth. We buy groceries in dollars, not mills. It's the dollars that we care about when it comes to taxes. We can do better. Marion hasn't gained any square miles in the time that I've been here, so maybe we shouldn't be raising our taxes. Keep it revenue neutral or less, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Well, we didn't have anything to really work on, but it looks like you're coming back forward again.
Thank you.
Well.
Finance report.
Well, do we have a financial update?
That's me.
Okay, yeah. Don't leave us yet.
Sorry.
Okay, please, please give us the financial update.
Yes, sir. So like I said last time, finances are still looking amazing. We did get April sales tax in and so that is February. And it is still looking right at budget. All of our revenues are either at budget or exceeding. And then expenditures are well below what we budgeted and what we would expect for these many months in. So at this point, we're just watching sales tax. Our neighboring communities are very concerned about their sales tax, but we have no indicators at this time that we should be concerned. Like I said, we're staying very much on budget. So if that changes, though, I will let you know, but everything is looking great so far.
So now I'm going to backtrack to what you did in your last report.
Yes.
When you looked at sales tax projections?
Yes.
How conservative were you?
Very. If you look at, I think it was the second chart where it was showing there were sales tax on it, I will say that that number is at least probably ten percent less. We have about a ten percent philosophy, I guess, of conservativeness for all the revenues. And then if they come in higher, amazing, and if not, that's okay, too.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Director Borth, on the finance? Okay, I think you're done this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like the next item up would be a single hauler update. Is that correct? It looks like we have Ms. Guard coming to the podium.
Hello, good evening. I don't have too much of a report to give you all tonight. No new information since the last time I talked to you, but we have been committed to talking about this topic at least once a month at the council meeting. So just a reminder, you will still have some upcoming votes for the single hauler. I'm going to try to bring them all to you at the same time. That's kind of why it's taking a little while. The Mid-America Regional Council is still working with the other communities to come up with their renewed contract and that's the contract we're going to jump on once that's done. So that will be one of your votes. Then we will essentially have to assign that contract to GFL. That will be your second vote. You will be asked to establish a budget fund for the special assessments that you will be collecting on the property tax bills. So those are your two additional votes. I hope at the next meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting, but no promises. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Guard?
I don't have a question, sorry, just a comment about I'm excited for the possibility of saving Merriam residents a lot of money with this. I did a little bit of looking at my historical trash costs over the last ten years. I think I've paid maybe about a thousand dollars more than what people in, say, Roland Park would have paid. So that's a, you know, a hundred, where'd that, sorry. I'm, so that's at, Merriam's got about a five thousand households, so that means, you know, if we're all paying about twelve hundred dollars over the last ten years extra, we're, as a city, we've given six million dollars to the trash company that we didn't need to. And so I think that's, I think that's a good opportunity for us.
Yeah, and I will say, I've gotten a number of pieces of feedback since we've gone through this process and I will, most of them have been positive. And so I just wanted to pass that along.
Any questions, comments from Ms. Guard? Okay, thank you for the update. Looks like next item is the June CIP update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The June CIP update is in your packet. I did want to highlight the Forty-Ninth Street project. The Amino Brothers is mobilizing today, so you should see them shortly clearing and grubbing and starting their storm sewer. They're starting at Switzer and working on each side of the road, depending on what type of construction they're doing, stormwater first. But they'll be working from Switzer to Knox. And then once they get that done, they'll go to Knox and to Antioch. Right now, there are some utilities finishing up east of Knox, so you will still see some of that construction on there. So anyway, we're really excited to get this project going. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions, Director Campkin? Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
Do we have any oversight on the, I can't remember the name of the sign company I saw their truck today, that puts out the street closed signs? And the reason I ask is they've had road closed, closure signs on Knox for three weeks. They came down today. But the road truly, for most of that, was not closed and it taught people that they could go around the signs and go around them fast because they weren't, the road truly wasn't closed. It wasn't closed until last week when they actually were in the intersection of Forty-Ninth and Knox. And then people had already become aware of the fact that they could go around the signs without any action. And I, I feel like it caused safety issues. Do we have any control over when they put those out?
I will add to Jason's. I, I see them in, in my neighborhood as well because they're roads leading up to Forty-Ninth Street, where they're left in the middle of the sidewalk or in people's yards for a day or two at a time, where they've like dismantled them but haven't collected them. So I, I see the same problems or similar problems by the same group.
So I'm assuming that would be for the utility work that's been going on. We do have a right-of-way inspector that periodically, you know, that's not our project, but our right-of-way inspector goes out and checks traffic control periodically. So we need to look at that if, if you're seeing that happening. So we need to do a better job of getting out there to take a look at it. And we'll go out and look at that tomorrow and see what's going on there.
Well, they, they took down most of the signs today, but then there was also confusion because there was road closure signs that they had out. And then they put new, other additional signs. It's, I can't remember what they said, construction ahead. And then they had confusing detour signs where they were actually, on, on County Line Road, there was actually a detour sign taking people down Knox, even though the road had road closure signs.
So what, I think what's, must be going on there is you've got our project that started today, so they put up the traffic control. And they put up, they should have put up road closed to through traffic from Switzer to Knox. And so what that means is we can't just close it because residents that live on the street have to get there. So you have to detour, you show the detour around. But what I'm thinking is that's probably conflicting with some other construction that's going on, so I, we need to go out there tomorrow and look.
This has been over a three-week period where there were, there was three weeks where there were detour signs telling people to go down Knox and then as, to turn onto Knox, they had to go around a road closure sign. All of that's kind of been cleared up because they came and took all the road closure signs down today. But I'm just talking, thinking about for the rest of this project. I didn't know if we had some oversight on whether we were, whether signs were confusing or if signs were unnecessary. I did ask the gas company, after the first weekend, that the road closure signs were still up, but no work was being done and all the roads were open, like why the signs were open. They said they had no control over that. It was a third-party sign company.
If it's for the, their project, then they do have control over that. I apologize about the confusion. We'll get out there tomorrow and take a look at that and see what's going on. And, you know, sometimes, like, we'll approve a right-of-way permit and the companies aren't always good about taking down their signs when they're finished. So that falls on us. We're always calling them to say, hey, go take up, get your sign, put them up. But we'll take a look and see what's going on there.
Go ahead, Ms. Lahey.
Is the, is the library demolition a CIP project or is it just general city work?
It's, it's not in the CIP, but it's obviously a city project.
If we knew when they were going to be done clearing the rubble? I know the most of the building was down this morning when I drove by, but there's a lot of brick on site.
Yeah, our facilities superintendent is overseeing that contract. I'll find out tomorrow and I will update you on the Friday admin report.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
No, I was just curious.
Any other questions, Director Campkin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got two informational items. One, Planning Commission Minutes from May seventh and a Parking Recreation Advisory Board Minutes from May twenty-seventh. Is everybody have any question concerning either one of those items? Okay, regarding our directors. Looks like we don't, okay. You have any other staff items, Mr. Engel?
Yeah, I've got two updates. One, I'm going to cede the floor to Assistant City Administrator Guard. She's going to give an update on the Zip Trip festivities that will be occurring on Friday.
We are so very excited. If you haven't seen Fox Four's Zip Trip, it is essentially a whole live broadcast from different communities through the area. We were very fortunate to be selected this year. And so on Friday morning, from seven AM to ten AM, there will be a live broadcast of their entire program from the Merriam Community Center, hopefully outside, assuming it doesn't rain. And up on your screen, you can see, we did do some pre-recorded interviews. Thank you, Councilmember Hands, great job. And then we have a, a number of live interviews. We wanted to showcase a bunch of, bunch of different things across Merriam. We had a little bit of say on what was going to go down, but they really had a lot of suggestions for us as well. And so we kind of just meshed our schedules together. A number of staff, a number of restaurants. They actually physically bring food to the set and they eat the food on live TV. So we can interview all of those restaurants. And then we also have a representative from JCPRD and then those Merriam must-sees were, again, a mesh of our recommendations and their recommendations. But if you can't, tune in this Friday, TiVo it or record it. And we're, we're happy, we're really excited about this. It's a great opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Sands.
So as someone who has watched a few of the Zip Trips, they often have crowds around them. Are we thinking that you want any people milling past or anything like that?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. We did this when I was in Shawnee and we had maybe a handful of people, but sometimes you're right, they do. I've let the police department, they're fully aware that we're going to have people around Friday morning and it's a public place, there's going to be public people there. They're happy to watch if they'd like.
Well, and sometimes they have bands, so.
I don't think we have, we don't have a band this time.
Perhaps we could all get our instruments out of our closets.
Maybe next time.
Yeah, kazoo's, there you go.
And I do just want to thank the marketing team, Jenna and Lauren and Karen and Brenna and Renee. Did I miss anyone? Okay. Have done a really great job putting this all together.
Any other questions from Ms. Guard on the Zip Trip? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I usually go into the office on Friday, but I'm going in on Thursday so I can sit and work in front of my TV to watch this.
Yay, we're so excited.
Come on down.
Oh, why would I even say TiVo? I aged myself.
I laughed because I told my parents and they were excited. They're like, we're going to record it. It's going to be so great.
Well, everyone, if you haven't watched it, it's not continuous. It moves in and out.
Yeah, three hours. They do real news, too, like news and weather updates, but.
Well, as real news as they do, yes.
Do they put their clips on their website? Because I am having to go into the office this weekend and not.
Yes, yeah, they definitely will. I'm not sure if it's immediate, but it certainly will be on there.
Cool.
Yeah.
I think I might have a VHS tape recorder.
I'll go to Slater Street Antiques to find something to play with. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Guard. What was the other, Mr. Engel?
Received several questions about the creek as a result of the heavy rains we had two Mondays ago. So I, I don't have a whole lot of information to share with you, but I do have a video that I made on my iPad on my way back from South Dakota this weekend, thanks to several staff members and Councilmember Leahy, that, just to kind of share what the creek looked like on that Monday. Did not leave its banks in downtown?
The nineteenth of May, right?
I believe so. The, this is at the Merriam Marketplace. You can see that it did flow back up into the tributaries, a little bit into the park, but that's by design. Did not leave the banks. For, for those that know what that looks like, I apologize. I probably got to, got to picture what it looks like when it doesn't look like that, just to put it in the context of how much water is moving through there. We are not aware of any flooding that occurred in our community. There was some water that spread out just north of us on Turkey Creek along the highway, but I believe that that is by design also. That is how they have channeled that creek as it moves north down towards Southwest Trafficway. I saw an aerial view of it, I think, on the news where it actually, it spread out through Mission and then it almost immediately went right back in its channel as it started to meander up towards Southwest Trafficway, which my understanding is it's by design. But I wanted to share with everyone what we knew about the creek and that maybe not historic, but torrential amount of rainfall that we had on that day, where other communities flooded, other creeks flooded in the metro and in Johnson County, but Turkey Creek and Merriam held firm. Happy to answer any questions about that or anything else you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Engel? All right, I understand we have an executive session this evening, sir?
We do, yes, sir. Quick one.
I would entertain a motion for that.
Say, we want to say eight forty-five? Eight forty-five? Okay. Mr. Mayor, move that the council recess into executive session for discussion related to potential property acquisition as allowed by KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B six, which allows the governing body to hold an executive session for preliminary discussion for property acquisition. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator and assistant city administrator. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at eight forty-five PM.
Can we have a motion, we have a second? Ms. Shred.
Mr. Mayor, a second?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Callow.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
I would call for a motion. Oh, Mr. Callow, okay. We have a second?
I motion that we adjourn.
A motion, we adjourn, we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second?
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.